Okay, the time is 6:05. I'm going to call this meeting to order. If we could all please rise and pledge allegiance. Mr. Sanders, if you could lead us.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, if you could please call the board. Ms. Chaney?
Here.
Okay, here. Ms. Eaves?
Here.
Ms. Parker?
Here.
Nancy Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Noel Rodriguez? Mr. Sanders?
Present.
Ms. Gail Sanders Connolly?
Here.
Ms. Sims?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here. Ms. Rodriguez is unfortunately home with her family. Her son was ill this weekend, and so I asked for our meditation. Let me just keep her and her family in our thoughts. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a welcome from the Roosevelt campus. So please, Roosevelt campus, take it away.
We'd like to welcome the board. We have a kind of a rolling PowerPoint that's up here, that's some pictures from the three programs. If any board members are not familiar, this building now houses a preschool and kindergarten program under the direction of Terry Turkot. The Halls Academy Middle School Program under the direction of Liz Crooks, and the Satellite Careers Academy, which is my program, which is older high school students. So we have students in this building from three or four to 19, maybe even 20 years old. And we all run very independent of each other, yet we interact very well. Both Halls and the high school students work with the kindergarten and preschool students in different ways. In our case, it's part of their schedule as a course for certain students, once we've determined they're appropriate for that. They can work in a kindergarten class or a preschool class one period a day and receive elective credit for that. We have probably about a dozen at any given time doing that, and we've been doing it now. This is our fourth year. We started the first year when Gaffney was here, and since then, the preschool and kindergartens, we've had great success with that. Generally, the teachers love it. They request as much of that as possible. Halls also does some volunteering with preschool and kindergarten. And Halls and the high school program probably are more independent of each other than most, but yet do get along well. We've had a couple of our teachers coach Halls' intermarial sports, and because of that, the students do come down once in a while to talk to the coach. And again, it's a good interaction all the way around. So we feel like that part of this school is very successful. The fact that the three programs coexist in such a positive way, I think, is good for all the students. It's certainly, from my perspective, very good for the high school students to understand that they have to be role models for the younger students, and it helps us direct them in terms of how they conduct themselves in the hallways and so forth. So again, we're pleased to have you here. If you have any questions about the program, Terry Turkot or I would be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is public participation. Currently, no one has signed up to address the board. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the board? Anyone who wants? Anyone who don't want to address the board, or twice? Third and final time. Seeing none, I declare public participation closed. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Ms. Sarah?
Thank you. Actually, I have Mr. Taylor in the audience who's going to come up and address. We had talked a little bit about the NWEA. It's our universal screener, one of our screeners that we use. And there were some questions around it last week, and so he's got a brief, three- to four-minute presentation to talk about the pros and the cons. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Two weeks ago, when I addressed you, and he had a couple of questions, and I was unsure on some of them, and I checked with the state, and we are required to use the same assessment for K-3 reading. We are required to report those scores three times a year, with the exception of kindergarten, which is one thing we've looked at as maybe saying that we will not test the kindergarteners in the fall. But we are required to use the same assessment. And in the past, we have had discussion on maybe switching the assessment. But after, you know, going into it and realizing what it would take to switch, you know, there really is not a cost savings when it comes to that. Also, you're still talking about the same amount of time in testing. Some of them, you know, we'll get to a little bit better, maybe some instructional data coming back, but when we have to factor in the training that would take place, we have, you know, always kind of gone back to, well, we know NWEA. We have been using it, and right now, we are going to stick with it. But we are open to looking to something else. It's just in this year, it would be really hard to roll out something new. I talked to the state, and we're not alone in this, that other districts, you know, are looking at switching and oftentimes will not because there really isn't that, you know, perfect assessment that gets to it. So one thing we would like to do is roll back some of it. And so we're talking about not requiring the language usage and the math test that are part of NWEA, because really, we are only required to do the reading assessment. So that would take a little bit more burden off. Also, the data we've been using, we've been using NWEA for five years when it comes to some of the awards we have gotten. The data has been an integral part of that award, as well as grant funding. And so right now, our grants are written with the NWEA data in mind. So we would need to look at that. And we are looking at, you know, possibly switching for the following school year, not the one coming up, because with everything else happening, it would just, we do not have the resources to really roll out something new. And it's not just, you know, staffing or time, it's also the technology, some of them that, the one we keep going back to, if we were going to switch, is DibblesNext. And that technology is different. It requires a touchscreen device versus a regular Chromebook. So we would need to make sure we have enough of those in our elementary schools, which we are starting to get there. Mr. Prokop has, in the last few purchases for Chromebook cards, looking at elementary schools, making sure that he did get the touchscreen devices. So our capacity there is growing. The, I guess, the major thing right now is the data that we're using right now, it's in, and if we're going to switch, we really need to do it in the right way. We don't want to just throw another thing out there, because, you know, with anything, it's always in the details where the trouble starts to happen. So we really want to think about it and do it in a purposeful way. So I believe you have a handout that has some of those points on the concerns, as well as what the state law is for reporting. I wanted to give you that, and I'd be, you know, I didn't want to overwhelm you with a lot of information either, so I tried to be as concise as possible. But if you have some other questions that maybe I can look at, I'd be happy to do so. But I tried to hit the major things there. I also wanted to say that the, next year, we're really, this past year, we looked at or we developed benchmark assessments for our middle schoolers to really align with S-BAC where we are measured by the state, and rolling that down to the elementary grades. So next year, that is going to be a big focus when it comes to assessment. So to throw something else out there at the same time, again, it comes down to the resources, the time. I remember when we rolled out NWEA, that's, I think that's all I did for about three months, was things that were involved with the rollout of NWEA and the understanding of the reporting and things of that nature.
Can I just jump into one thing? When the new teacher evaluation tool first came out five years ago, I believe, one of the requirements was, if you have a standard test measure, which we all do, you had to use that as a part of your goals for your teacher evaluation, which made it even more high stakes than it already is, depending on the state. With this new, we revised our teacher evaluation tool, and for next year, our teachers won't be required to use NWEA as part of their SLO or student learning objective. It will be all the benchmark assessments that we create based on S-BAC. And I think that that's been some of the, you know, anxiety for the teachers around, it's hard not to have control when a little one's taking an assessment and those kinds of things. So that takes some of the pressure off. I think for us, and again, I'll just reiterate what John said, you know, we're bound by law to do these assessments. Can we cut back on some of it? Yes. And I think not testing the little ones, the five-year-olds in the fall, we can, we don't have to do that. And we will strictly just go with a reading assessment for grades K through three. It's up in the air. We want to use it in grade five, only because that's one of the indicators that we use, not only for summer learning, for summer school, that's one of our cut scores that we use, but we also use it when we start to think about placement of students in the middle schools and what we're going to do with them. What we can do, though, is say for fourth and fifth grade, you'll take it once a year, not three times a year, or twice a year. Grades one, two, and three, we are bound by law to give it to them three times a year in reading. So, any questions on that? Will be, will there be any cost savings to cutting back on the?
Unfortunately, no. The NWEA charges a license per student, and it basically allows us to use any of those assessments, or not.
So if we use one, then they basically, they can have six. We don't want six. We just want the one, but they don't give you a cost savings for it.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Rogers?
I do have another couple of things. And I have two people actually in the audience. We have Adam Kovak, who is a teacher at DeLoreto, and we have Crystal Lodevico, who's a teacher here at Satellite Career Academy. And they're going to come up for just a little bit. I said, rather than trying to, they have passion for this, and they're going to talk a little bit about Captivating Kids, and you know, our emphasis is going really more towards STEM and STEAM, and they've been blazing a trail for us over the last couple of years.
Thank you very much. I did have a presentation, hopefully I'll show in a minute, but I'm very excited that our district has this opportunity to take part in an inter-district grant program called Captivating Kids III: Educate and Innovate. The other districts that New Britain is working with are Bristol, Meriden, Hartford. And we had our first exchange day on Friday, April 6th, in Meriden, and our second on April 7th. And here are a few photos to share with you what went on during those days. There's also a website and a Facebook page that you could search up, just type in Captivating Kids III, and you'll see more about it. So the program is designed to help students work together and polish their communication skills and build their self-esteem with other middle school students in central Connecticut. The school that is, the one school that New Britain has involved is DeLoreto. We hope to expand that in the future and have more students involved. The other school is Satellite Careers Academy. I have four very talented mentors that are working with the DeLoreto students during all 10 exchange days. This is just an outline, a very brief outline of the program. It's sponsored by Quelch and CT Science for Kids. Quelch is Connecticut Women's Education Fund League, and it, meaning that we have to involve at least 70% females, and the, you know, again, 30% males, and the whole background is to try to encourage females into math, science, engineering-type programs. So this is what we did on April 6th, which was Friday. We went over to the Washington Middle School in Meriden, and we did some team-building activities. Camp Sloper in Southington came over and worked with our students. We did some Lego brainstorming memory games and things like that. And simple machine teamwork games. Okay, and this is at DeLoreto Middle School, April 7th. It was STEAM Day. This is a picture of a bunch of our students and my sister, Ashley Lodevico. I need to give her props, and she was the art teacher who worked with us. And we did gyro-taku, fish printing. So we learned a little bit about that. We learned about multiculturalism. Keep that going.
In addition to the fish printing, the students learned a lot about ecology of the fish in Connecticut. So we built a lot upon the science piece of it, bringing that and incorporating that into the STEAM event that day.
The other rotation that day was penny boats.
Yeah, penny boats, a lot of it has to do with the study of density, incorporating basics of chemistry. And the object of it is to have students build boats and actually, as many pennies as possible, using a limited amount of materials, so they had a controlled environment. We actually had, I believe, according to the teacher who was running that event, they had a record number of pennies, I think it was about 400 pennies, from one of the DeLoreto students at the boat held before it finally failed. But it was, we actually had another record that day, too. So it was really nice to see the kids, all the students were involved, and they were highly interested in the activity, and it was great to see.
And then the last rotation was a multiculturalism event where students made posters, and the posters were all based upon a poem by Maya Angelou called "The You and Family." And they all gathered in the cafeteria, and a student read the poem, and they each turned when their cue word was said, and it was a really great way to cap off that day. Our next STEAM Day is also going to be at DeLoreto Middle School, and you're all very welcome to come and see us. We're going to be doing catapults and rockets. We're going to be building the catapults and blasting off the rockets another day. But the construction of it will be that day, and it's very exciting. The kids have a great time, and hopefully you could share and come and see us.
So the remaining of the program incorporates the STEAM-type of activities, such as the one that you see here, the catapults and the rockets. There is a, there's a trip that's going, we're going to UConn. The students are going to visit the School of Agriculture up there, and then, of course, they can't leave the UConn campus without getting some ice cream from the dairy bar. So they're going to get a sample of that. We're also going to go to Camp Madituck in Clement, Connecticut, and they're going to do a full team-building day, including high ropes and low ropes, and fishing, and boating event. And we're also, we're partnering with, like I said, with, as Crystal said, with other schools and other community members, and bringing everybody together for this whole program.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any board members? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Couple of others quick. I'm pretty sure everyone got the invitation. If you didn't, for Thursday evening, we have our celebration, actually, for all our elementary schools. We'll be performing onstage, including high school. They're all invited. It's in partnership with the BH1, and you know, they've been our generous donors over the last three years, also Lego and American Savings Foundation. So that's us coming Thursday at 7 o'clock. I'm just going to keep giving you some of the things that are happening. We have Mandy Gonzalez from Hamilton coming to work with our high school students, and she will be there on April 23rd. So if you'd like to stop by for that, too, that should be, you have that in your, you should have that in your folder as well. And the last thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Conata put out a trial balloon, which I'm reading right now, because I never knew a trial balloon existed, but he put a trial balloon out on Facebook on April 13, asking our parents about the inverted half-days. We had said that maybe we would make some of the half-days start later and just turn it around, so parents who were working could possibly come for conferences. And so 436 people responded, which is a decent amount of people. 45% were in favor of it, and 55% were opposed to it. Most of them were having to do with concerns around childcare before school. And then a lot of the families just suggested that we possibly add one more evening conference date, which will be something that we'll have to talk to the teachers' union about if we do decide to go forward with that. And then you can also just read for yourself that we were, again, the second year in a row awarded, distinguished by the National Academy Foundation for our Academy of Finance. And you know, we're just really working hard this year on our IT academy as well. So a lot of good things. That's about it.
The Mandy Gonzalez, what time is this at?
It's, I believe, in the all-day. It's during the day.
So just during the school day?
It's during the school day. She's coming to work with them. I can get exact times from you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just.
Yeah, I say take a day off. That's it.
Are there any other board members who would like to make a report at this time? Ms. Connolly?
Always happy to take in money. So we have a couple donations. $1,371.51 for Robots for Inner City. That was done on Donors Choose. And then $690 for Jefferson Elementary for an enrichment program, I wouldn't give that one detail. And then $40,000 that I actually may want to take off the consent agenda, just because I have a couple of questions. That is, that is for Connecticut School-Based Diversion Initiative. It's through Governor Malloy's chance, society, second chance, society legislation. Just talks about having a stipend position, and they must be a leader in residence. I just have some questions. We can take it off, but it's $40,000.
Any other board members have a report to make, please? I'd like to thank the numerous aldermen who are in the audience right now. I see Alvin Boe, Slario, and Alvin Rosado. Medley's in back there. You're here more as school, though, right? Okay. In addition, just for my report, I'd like to welcome Jim Sanders Jr., who is joining the board. He was appointed to fill Rizel Montes' vacancy when she stepped down from the board. So welcome, Jim, and best of luck. Okay.
We're waiting.
So if there are no other board reports, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. I'm going to pull off item E at Ms. Connolly's request, and also, if you look under item D, there are numerous.
Pull that off, just a second. I was going to ask that, yeah, all of D.
Okay, so D will be taken off. Are there any other items people would like to see taken off consent? So currently, we have items A, B, C, F, and G. Hearing no objections, that consent agenda is approved. I'll now entertain a motion on, I'm actually going to take these, well, we can discuss them all, that's fine. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 3D, which is the job descriptions.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Ms. Chaney?
Yes. Personnel did meet, can you hear me? Personnel did meet to review many new job descriptions.
Tap the bottom.
Tap the bottom, okay.
There we go. Many of them are brand-new because they align with some of the changes that will be happening in the district, so I think that people probably want an explanation. So, Ms. Sarah, you want to start, and then Dr. Tucker can chime in?
Sure. Yeah, sure. Your mic is Dr. Tucker. You take that mic in case you need it.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney. So as you know, just from the dinners and then just some of the communications, I did send out a video, I think it was a Friday before the break, just to, again, start talking about the changes that are going to be coming our way. For us, the reason for the redesign is, number one, the data supports it, that our scores are not where they need to be. We know that, yes, there are pockets, and we have great teachers, and I will always say that, but the structure, the current structure, isn't working for us. Our kids are not meeting, are not making the gains that they need to be making. And so part of the redesign is to approve teaching and learning. The second one is to create efficiencies in our current schedule. And the third is to be able to provide access for all students to have staff-like experiences, regardless of a label, or it's, all students should have similar experiences. And so part of the redesign is creating time in our schedule, so that all teachers have time to collaborate. All this is based on the research that I have given to all of you a couple of times and to all the staff. It's to create time for them to collaborate. The best professional development is when they're sitting together and learning from each other, based on what they see the kids are producing. So with all of that, we needed to, we need to reassign or move certain positions to create a schedule that affords all teachers opportunities to work together. So one of the first things, and again, it's, our goal, especially at New Britain High School and Secondary, is to create interdisciplinary connections from one to the next, and application opportunities for our kids. Starting at New Britain High School, rather than having department heads, one for mathematics, one for ELA, and one for social studies, and one for science, we are creating department heads for humanities and department heads for STEM. Well, still the same number of department heads, but humanities takes into account English Language Arts and Social Studies together. So it's one department head working with these, with both departments of teachers together, to show the connections for students from one classroom into the next. And the same can be said for the math and the science. We have one STEM. So you'll see a new job description for department head for humanities and the department head for STEM or Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. The second, the second job description you'll see is a STEAM enrichment teacher. That's been crafted for elementary, pre-K5 level students, and STEAM is STEM, but with the arts. So the A stands for the arts. And the STEAM enrichment teacher, the job description, as you'll see, is a job that requires an elementary certification or a teaching certification. And it's around incorporating, having our elementary students have experiences with lab applications, being able to have hands-on opportunities every single week. So they'll have two to three hours of STEAM time, in addition to their music, their art, and their PE. And so it'll be in conjunction with the classroom teacher who is using the text, the nonfiction text, to teach the kids the science, but then knowing that elementary teachers struggle sometimes at finding time to do those lab experiences, having a teacher that's devoted to doing those hands-on experiences for all of the kids. A school library clerk, as you know, during part of the restructuring, our media specialists, who are currently in the libraries and taking care of all they need to take care of, in the library and teaching as well, will be shifting to STEAM positions. We don't want our libraries, which have thousands and thousands of dollars of books in there, to go and, just to go and disrepair. And so we've created a school library clerk, and I know Ms. Chaney kind of looked it over from her mind, from her eye, from the public library, and felt that it was, and really, the primary responsibility is to maintain the upkeep of the physical library itself. All ordering of books will not be done by the school clerks. That will be done from central office. We also have instructional coach. At each building, K through eight, there will be one instructional coach in each building. The instructional coach, we would like it to be someone who's aspiring to be a leader. We are trying to build in a talent pipeline for teachers who want to go into administration. But we also want to be able to have time to train them. So the instructional coach will be working closely with the building administrators and learning from the building administrators. They'll be running at least one of the days per week of NBU or New Britain University time with teachers. The music teacher, K-12, is just a, that, there's nothing new to that. What we did, we just cleaned up that job application, so there's nothing, nothing to really talk about there. The facilitator of STEAM in K-8 Summer Programming is something. You'll notice that as we redesign, we will reassign, most of our central office staff will be leaving central office and going back to buildings. So teachers who have teacher certifications will be going back either into classroom or STEAM positions or instructional coach positions. But we know that the summer programming is a really big success for us in New Britain. The data supports that, and we And we now have three levels plus the high school of summer programming, K-3, 4, 5, and 6A. We've got C, create, and extreme. It requires an enormous amount of planning and soliciting funds for the afternoon. We get about three hundred thousand dollars in grants to run these programs over the summer. That requires a lot of work to write the grants, so we will be looking for a facilitator of STEAM, K-8. And the enrichment teacher for the CTE focus will be from middle school. We are bringing culinary back to our middle schools, so our students will have four labs or classroom kitchens set up for our middle school students, not only to have some culinary, but also we will have IT, a focus on IT, and we'll have a focus on STEAM and STEM. So, there will be, there will be more for our students to choose from at the middle school, and we're hoping higher interest, more hands-on learning for our students in the middle school. So, all of those job descriptions support the change that's coming. Yep.
I just need to bring your attention to two things. During Personnel Committee, when we reviewed the department head for humanities, we have taken out, as of this morning, under Primary Function, Bullet Number Two, the original description had directly responsible for the curriculum areas of English Language Arts nine through twelve, Social Studies nine through twelve, and World Languages nine through twelve. I was asked to delete and World Languages nine through twelve, as well as Bullet Number Three that says Works in Coordination, District Coordinator of Language Acquisition, because there will be a lead teacher that might be handling all of the World Language, so that has been removed. So, I just wanna bring that to your attention. The corrected version is in your folder.
I was just gonna ask why it's up right here.
That was actually, I was gonna say, and one other thing I neglected, our student reps are over there, and did you have anything, jumping back to our board reports, did you have anything to report on that at the board reports time? Because I forgot to hook over there.
Oh, well, I think that right now, students are, what is going, throwing back, oh, oops. Okay. Wait. Okay.
One tap. There you go.
You have it go. Go.
Okay. Going back to the walkout, students were really happy with that. So, I think that if more, the students' voices were being able, let me phrase this correctly, if students were able to use their voices more commonly, especially about current issues and how that can help the school community, I think students would, A, benefit from that greatly, and B, grow, A, communicating skills, as well as knowledge about current world issues. I think that current world issues aren't being talked enough about in some of our classes, and I think that if we incorporate that more, we'll just be more knowledgeable about what's going on, and it's really important, especially with our generation looking forward.
Okay. And just to remind you, you are a student representative, you're a member of the board, so to speak, so if at any point, anything we're discussing, you have things like you to share, and I'm not catching your eye, just throw a hand in the air, you know, throw something at me, that's fine. Okay. Sorry. Back to the topic at hand, are there any board members who have any questions, comments on the matter?
I do have one other thing to bring to your attention. During the Personnel Committee meeting, we actually reviewed nine job descriptions, you will see only eight here. The one that we looked at, which was the Coordinator of Language Acquisition, that's an administrative position, and once I received your edits from that meeting for the contract, it does have to go to the administrative union for review before it comes back. So, that one will be ready hopefully for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Any board member questions? I know it was lost over, I'm actually very happy to see that the changes to the music teacher job description reflects the new national standards. So, it was good to see that, even though it was, yep, not a huge change, but thank you for that. If there's no other questions, then I'm gonna ask all those in favor of approving the job descriptions, including the one that was in our packet for the Head of Humanities, not, sorry, the one that was handed out for us for Head of Humanities, which has those changes that Dr. Tucker made us aware of.
Yeah, they're renewed and then redad or not?
Unless, unless there's an objection, everyone has the copy of the revised one with them, so I'm happy, you know, just accepting that that's what we're discussing.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto our next item, which is 3E. Entertain a motion to accept a donation in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the CT School-Based Diversion Initiative.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Nancy Rodriguez. Ms. Conley?
I guess I have the question of, is this going to be, is this an existing position?
I'm gonna let Ms. Potton, if you would, come up and talk about it a little bit. It's not an existing, this is not an existing position.
It's not. No, this is new.
Good evening. So, this diversion funding that was given to us, it's really not, it's listed as, on that paperwork, as a donation, it's really grant-funded. We were, we assumed that it was a donation, but it's not, so I just want that to be perfectly clear. This diversion came from really a committee, the diversion work, and spearheaded by Jason Merrimont, he is Merrimont from Plaskin Middle School. And we came as a committee, and we worked on how best to serve our students who are most fragile. And Tania Hill from the School-Based Diversion Initiative saw the work that we were doing and granted us this diversion funding. And so, what we did is we hired another person who is just out right now seeking information on how best to use the forms that we've already created through the Title IV diversion work, and how best to service our families. So, this person is a social worker who is going out to all of our middle schools, going out to the grade-level meetings, going out to the lead teacher meetings, and meeting with the administrators on how they interact with our most fragile, most complex students.
I guess my question is, it says this year and for the next two years, so this person, do they become part of a union where when we lose that funding, we lose the person, or do we have to absorb that salary into...
They are not part of a union, they are working for us as a Kelly Sub.
Okay, perfect.
But as a social worker, Kelly Sub, yes.
Can I also just add, Ms. Conley, that if you recall, earlier in the year, we had said the family with service need?
Yep.
That was taken away from us. And so, we formed this team to say, how can we take this on now and try to match our kids who are really struggling up with community resources? And we started that team, that was from J. Merrimont, actually Kelly Brown. And so, through this SBDI, they awarded this money for a social worker. And it's gonna be for as long as they award us the money, unfortunately.
Right, it is, yeah, that is what it is. But we are working with them very closely in that agency on this project.
Because it's definitely not the service, I worry more about the money, because I know that we were flat-funded again, so community...
Yeah, right. But we're gonna apply again for the Title IV, and that diversion work as well.
Okay.
So, maybe I can clarify this a little bit more. So, SBDI, the School-Based Diversion Initiative, they approached, it was actually Nancy last summer, she diverted it to me, Diversion Initiative. And I met with the young lady, actually, there were two of them at that time. And New Britain was again identified to receive funding if we were so inclined to receive that. We had to identify where we wanted to have this person work. So, we did work with them, there was a plan for the two middle schools, feeling very strongly that these were the students who were most inclined to become involved with the law. This is why New Britain was getting this money, because we have a high number of students who are being arrested and being placed into juvenile detention. So, the diversion work that we're doing was definitely timely because of the ending of the family with service needs, and at the same time, the district was moving along trying to develop the family engagement team. So, we actually married those supports, and because, we were actually forewarned that there would be money potentially available, but because of the delays with Malloy, it didn't come until much later than we had thought. So, this forty thousand was actually earmarked for us. It happened in a nice way, because Amanda Wayne that we have hired to be the leader in residence is actually a person who's been working as an intern with us, and she's been working with our most challenging youth, and so she's very on board. So, we're kind of trying to marry all of our practices. When I heard that the money was available, I immediately emailed Tricia, and I said, how about if we use this person as part of the family engagement team process? But really, we have to keep in mind that it's really about diversionary activities to keep our kids out of jail. And so, we want to engage them, we want to provide alternatives to suspension, to expulsion, to restraining, seclusion.
Other board questions?
Yeah. Is there, must be a limit on the number of students that they can work with, right? Or is there a limit on the number of students they're going to work with, or...
It can only be at the middle schools.
It can only be at the middle schools. And so, what are they gonna do, what are the activities? Is it counseling?
Trish, I don't know if you wanna chime in, but again, and I don't know, I understood that it was at the middle schools, you said something about engaging some of the elementary students, but...
No, there's no elementary students involved here, it's just the middle school students. And right now, Amanda is getting information. She is meeting with the team members at the grade level, at the leadership team, and the administration, trying to just look at the documents that were created through the family engagement team, and working with, there's, we have two Amandas in this position, one at the high school and one at the middle school. So, like Ms. Grant had said, we're marrying the system so that there's a continuum, but there's, but we're also specializing with Amanda Wayne at the middle school, and trying to work on really developing a strong structure so that when we do have families and students in these situations, in these compromised situations, that they are getting the services they need. So, they will ultimately have a caseload, there will be a proper intake process so that families and students are getting what they need to, to the road of recovery.
My question is, after the program is done in regards to funding, what's the outcome to it, and what connections the individuals are gonna have in the community, like Wheeler Clinic, CCMC?
Sure. So, we can't predict the future, we accept the money and the funding, and we use it to the best of, to our advantage, to create those structures. And what both Amandas are doing right now in terms of outsourcing to the community, to Klinkberg, to all of those agencies, is that they are connecting with those agencies right now, building those relationships, so that they know that we have this diversion team at CSDMB, and that we, there are go-to people for very specific, sensitive reasons.
And what model modification will they be using for behaviors?
Excuse me?
Modification, what type of behavior, strategies, interventions they'll be using with these individuals?
We're developing that right now. Both Amandas are licensed social workers, and so they're gonna be using the tools that they've been trained in to look at the documents, meet with the agencies, meet with the families. So, there's no set structure right now, they're working on it. So, we're, it's a work in progress, we're meeting regularly. Meg Shea is working with Amanda at the high school, Jason Merrimont's working with Amanda Wayne, and we're meeting weekly on vetting the documents, doing outreach to some families, but mainly just making sure that we've got a tight entrance and exit package for our families and the students.
And what services do you have for the Spanish-speaking families?
Amanda Cologne speaks fluent Spanish.
So, Yvonne, the family engagement team, as we developed it, was really a microcosm of the JRB. So, we actually have met, and we've brought community providers in, so we already have a nucleus of providers. So, what we were missing was somebody in the middle at the district level who could serve as that follow-up person and go-to person and know all of the students, and make sure that, again, they are connected with these resources. So, when the family with service needs went away, we had to have something, some way of referring students and connecting them, and knowing that their families were also in crisis if the student was in crisis. So, a lot of these students, we have mechanisms for them to also get tiered interventions in our schools, some of those being one-on-one counseling with social work, small group counseling, maybe being referred to the School-Based Health Center counseling, to Klinkberg counseling. So, it depends on the student, they may end up getting referred for a special education evaluation, but what these two people allow us to do is for someone to take responsibility and make sure that the kid's not dropped, because we didn't have anybody that could pick that up.
And fortunate for us, Amanda Cologne, her former position was with Mobile Crisis. So, she is well-connected with all of those services.
Ms. Parker?
Yeah, so the forty thousand is a stipend, is that, didn't buy you two people, right?
The forty thousand pays, I believe, for Amanda Wayne.
Yes, she, yes, that's exact, yep.
As a leader in residence is what they call her.
So, she already works for the school?
No, no, she was doing her internship with us, she is getting her master's in social work, so she was actually filling in for us. And I knew her because she had been interning under one of my other school's social workers, and when the position came forward, I said to Trish, why don't you go down and talk to this young lady, I think she's perfect for the job. So, that's how we recruited her.
Any other board member questions?
Yeah, I have another question. Are there certain stipulations, because we take this grant, that we're gonna have to also provide or give, you know, usually when you get a certain grant, then you have to either teach a certain program, or are there other stipulations or other...
Not with regard to this one. SBDI is actually an agency that's funded, they've got a piece from Connecticut Judicial Centers, they've got a piece from SDE, they've got a piece from DCF. So, they're kind of a standalone agency, and that's why they were kind of waiting for Malloy to release his money. But it's not like getting a grant from the Connecticut State Department of Education. This is like a fiscal grant that's tied to a person, because again, you can't come in. What Tiana has been doing with us this year is come in, and she's done some very brief one-day professional development activities, but that isn't going to create change. So, this is the next step. And again, because we're on such a high-risk level, we were eligible for this money, and we had to do, actually, a petition for it very quickly if we were interested, but it doesn't, we don't have to do any kind of specialized program.
I personally just feel that I would need like more clarification as to how this program is different from any of the other programs that we've had for this, for the students that have been in the same situation in the past.
So, in, Family with Service Needs was basically the end of the road for our students who weren't coming to school, who were chronically defiant of school rules, who, who basically we had tried everything, and then we would do a Family with Service Needs, and many years ago, they used to be adjudicated, the last few years, they would go in, they would at least get assigned. The last few years, they would go in, they would at least get assigned some kind of a probation officer. And it went away. They said, we're not going to accept these anymore. We know that we still have the students. And so, we felt very strongly that we needed to do something proactive to engage this group of students who may not be caught by other activities that we were engaging in. So, this was a very directed activity and it comes at the same time when you have the state saying, we don't want you to expel students. We don't want you to suspend students. And yet, you have these students and what do you do? And DCF's not picking up the referrals. And now, court's not taking them. And JRB is getting them only if they have recurrent arrests. So, this was our mechanism to try to, again, identify kids before they get into problems because we're starting to see that their attendance is falling off or that they were arrested. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other board member questions? I'd like to make a motion just to amend the memorandum to say acceptance of grant instead of donation. Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion of the amendment?
No, I agree with...
All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A further discussion of the amended memorandum? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'd like to recognize Alden Reyes. I don't know if you were here earlier. If you were, I'm sorry for missing you, but thank you for coming out. Next item on our agenda is item 4A, and that's approval of a bid waiver and purchase order to outfit 16 math classrooms at Edinburgh High School. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Sims. Ms. Conley?
Just want to clarify, this is in addition to the four that we did the last meeting? Or is this all-inclusive? 16, right?
Yes. So, we did the four at $51,000. And so, as we continue to look at the high school, we keep adding classrooms. And now, this additional 16 will include all math classrooms at the high school. So, you have a makeup space, which is not part of this. And then, you have a total of 19 classrooms, not classrooms.
So, it's, okay. So, it's 119 plus the 51?
So, it's three plus four, 11, plus 16 equals 20. Did I do my math right?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd just feel I've already gotten that through. Mr. Sanders, who was not here at our last meeting, there were four classrooms that were brought forward previously. And in reading the memo, it was recommended that we do them all. So, any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is entertain a motion to approve Phase III additions slash renovations as new and slight improvements at Smalley Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Chini. I'd imagine you'd like to refer to Mr. Moore.
Yes, please.
Mr. Moore?
Good evening. Part of the process for a school building project requires the Board of Ed to authorize the superintendent and the president of the Board of Education to sign the forms to bring the plans up for state review. We're going up for state review for Phase III next week, April 24th. As soon as we get the approval from the state, which we expect to get that within two days, we'll be out to bid. And there's 18 packages included in Phase III. Phase I, there was one package included that has already been bid and awarded and a contractor is at Smalley School working, and that's the demolition and hazardous material removal. Phase II included four parts. The four parts were the site, landscaping, foundation, concrete, and steel. Of those four parts in Phase II, we awarded three. Phase I and Phase II has accounted for about $1,500,000 below what we had estimated. The state of Connecticut is experiencing a very competitive bidding market for school construction. Forty-five projects were approved by the state last year. Ten are in the hopper for this year. A lot of those projects are going out to bid and a lot of the contractors are bidding on this. So, it's favorable. Unfortunately, we only had one bid for steel. That one bid we received for steel was 50% over what we had, we had estimated. We're back out to bid and because of the bids that these other contractors were bidding on had been awarded, we know contractors that did, do not have awards that are interested in this package. So, that's out to bid and we'll be opening those next week. All right, so we're asking the superintendent, the board, to allow the superintendent and the president of the board to sign the deal 42 so we can bring the plans up next week for plan review. These plans and bid specifications are going before the board, the school building committee Wednesday, this Wednesday for approval as well. Thank you.
Questions from board members?
Whoa, that was record time.
Ms. Chini?
I just would like to know, are we on schedule?
I ask that question every time we get together with our construction manager and his response is yes. And that's why we're breaking them up into packages. We're doing critical packages first and that's why the contractors, they're working already. So, we are on schedule, yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none. You're raising your hand.
Nope, nope, sorry. I was checking it off.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is 4C, approved bid waiver and purchase order for Chromebooks, Google Chrome Management Console, license, and accessories for Raymond Hill School. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Chini. Ms. Conley?
I do have a question. This one kind of took me off guard a little bit. Chromebooks for Raymond Hill School?
Sure. So, under Title I, we give funding to Raymond Hill, CHMC, and to Sacred Heart. That's part of accepting the Title I. Our students, not New Britain Public School students, but New Britain students go to these schools. So, we are obligated to give funding based on student counts. It's the whole formula that the state gives us. And so, they are entitled to use that Title I funding to fit their needs.
So, when we do the Google Chrome, the console and the license and the accessories, is that in their name or our name?
It's in our name.
Oh, thank you. I saw that, okay.
Yes, it is. Yeah, right.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we have to keep them briefly separate from our domain so what we basically do is put in contact for a CDW reseller and have them formally discuss this. So, we're not...
Do normally, you just give them a chunk of money or you always give them goods?
Well, there's a formula. Every year, the state gives us the number of students and we plug it into this formula. It's a little complicated. And we give them the funding that's allocated to them through this Title I funding.
Okay. So, but is it usually, usually cash or is it stuff?
Is it goods or cash? Usually, it's like a cash stipend that you would give them, but now, we're giving them Chromebooks.
No, 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 no. We, they get an allocation through Title I funding. It's not, they don't get any cash from us? Yes. I'm sorry, I must be misunderstanding.
Just to clarify, we allocate, we say, this is how much funding you have. If they make purchases from that, they have to go through the board for approval?
Correct. Yes.
Ah, okay, perfect.
Sacred Heart and CHMC have to go through us to do all of this purchasing. If they go to professional development, we get the POs. If they get books, we get the POs.
And just to further clarify, if the things that they were expending this on, for example, were a series of professional development workshops that were below the threshold that required board approval, it wouldn't come to the board. So, it may be that in the past, some of this funding was spent without exceeding that threshold, correct?
Correct. And that is the case. That's why you perhaps see this for the very first time because Raymond Hill wanted to get Chrome cards, they're very expensive, and that's why you see this.
Thank you, Ms. Conley.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 4D, partnerships. And this is approving a memorandum of understanding between the community mental health affiliates and CSDMB. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Sims, seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. Ms. Sims?
I don't have any discussion.
Any board questions regarding this MOU? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is approving a memorandum of understanding between CCSU and CSDMB. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Chini.
I have no discussion.
Any questions from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 4F, academics. And this is approval of a bid waiver and purchase order for a diagnostics process at DeLoreto Elementary and Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Chini.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Parker. And I'm actually going to ask Ms. Sarah, could you just briefly walk us through this? Thank you.
So, if you recall, last year, Al, Slade, and Polaski had an audit done, basically. And it's called a diagnostic, but it was an audit just to really get a feel for what the culture and the climate was in the building. And so, that was done by Engaging Schools. And as you know, Engaging Schools, we did receive, were receiving grant dollars from the state for our middle schools around improving culture, climate, and the building. So, the only school, because we didn't have funding last year, that didn't have the audit or the diagnostic was DeLoreto. So, the funds have come on now, so now, we can do that. Now, all four of our middle schools will have it. Engaging Schools will be back this summer to provide Professional Development Institute for our leaders and for our teachers around improving engagement in the buildings. And so, that's what this is for, is to approve that. What is the funding source?
Ms. Conley?
What is the funding source?
It's pending our 1003, which is the, the school improvement grant dollars for the middle schools.
Any other questions? Ms. Sims?
What sort of program changes have been made at the schools that did have an audit already? What was the result and what was done about it? So...
I'm good. I think I've got one. I'm gonna scream.
Don't cross the screens.
So, we didn't get the results back until, it takes a while to get results back. And so, again, with this lining, everything that the high school is doing, we're bringing Engaging Schools down to the middle as well. And the initial work, and it hasn't started yet with Engaging Schools, we're waiting for them to come on board, is to, so if you think about it, we're making the changes to the infrastructure, right, and how we're delivering. And Engaging Schools comes in and helps, they're currently working with our math teachers at New Britain High School. That's the one, one department that's really getting Mr. Billy's out there too, and I know. And it's really teaching them instructional strategies in a, in a better way on how to engage our kids. And we chose the math department at New Britain High School because that's where we were seeing the highest failure rate. They will be doing the same thing with our middle school teachers around engaging students at a middle school level. So, that training will start this summer. It hasn't started yet. It will start this summer and go for the next three years with the teachers. And it's around professional learning. And it will happen during their NBU time.
So, the changes have really only been applied at the high school with the math teachers yet?
Yes.
So far?
Yeah. And again, our whole thing is to make sure that it starts in sixth grade because if we're handing ninth graders off who aren't ready, definitely problems. We're bringing it all the way down to sixth grade.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Sarah, I noticed in looking over the materials that one of the things that they're providing is sort of a report back out on, on the schools and their findings.
Yes.
And it might be useful for the board at a future meeting to have that added to our agenda, presentation, discussion of what those...
I can do that next month or in the next couple of weeks. I can bring the initial baseline results from the three middle and from our high school. So, you can see there are reports, okay? Yeah? Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion to add an item to the agenda. It is located in your green folders. This was referenced in the superintendent's report at the beginning of the meeting. And this is bringing back our old business of the NWEA purchase order.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Chini to add this item to our agenda. All those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase order for the NWEA test day.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Conley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. I know, Ms. Sims?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to point out that I'm glad that you all went back and looked at it and especially at the possibility of scaling back because I hate to see us do things just because that's how it's been done. And really consider, you know, what's developmentally appropriate, should kindergarten, you know, what is really required and what are we doing that we don't have to do so. I just want to say that I appreciate you doing that. And definitely the thinking about it for, you know, next year because I also feel like a lot of times, we do get things and it's like, whether you kind of agree with it or not, we've got to do it because now, it's our only option and it's due tomorrow, you know? So, to, I just hope that that really, that process kind of really begins now to look at what other places, you know, there are other priority districts in Connecticut. What are they doing? What works? And how can we kind of, you know, beyond that? But thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to add, Ms. Sims, I believe that there may be some time in the curriculum committee's calendar at some point, as I get a depth glare from the back, to possibly explore this and look at, look at assessment as part of the curriculum base and what we want to do going forward. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. There was a request, and so, I'd entertain a motion if a board member is interested in adding an item to the agenda, discussion of a pending legal matter. If there's interest in that.
Please.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Conley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I would entertain a motion to go into an executive session with the board, Ms. Sarah, Mr. Kane. I believe that's all we need, is time for a discussion of a pending legal matter.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sims, seconded by Ms. Conley. All those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in executive session.